Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Let me make sure we've got everybody. Okay, there's Mary. See who's not home. Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is a little after 6:30, 6:31. This meeting is now called to order. Would everybody please rise as you can and face the flag in the center of the city and for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, and for God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Everyone at home. I'm still admitting. Folks, David, you might want to turn your microphone down now that you're in. So that you don't feedback. Okay, are we, are we broadcasting? Okay. Looks like it, okay. Deidra, have you gotten your audio yet? You may want to call in if not, or you can listen on Facebook Live. So this is a cumbersome way to, to do this, obviously, but we will, we will motor on and, has everyone, so if everybody except council at this point and David and Wendy could mute their microphones and city council, if you could go ahead and unmute, we'll go through this agenda and try to, try to be as efficient as possible. Has everyone had a look over the minutes?
I'll move to we approve as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I have a motion, a second.
Did I hear Amanda? Forum there?
Aye.
Okay. Any, any opposed?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, minutes are good, thank you. With no unfinished business and with the revised agenda, no need to amend the, agenda as we have moved the executive session, which is item number nine to the end of our meeting. So that we, when we get back, there'll be no need for us to get back on at the end of the meeting. That discussion. For the sake of virtual meetings, it'd be a lot cleaner and easier for the public and they will attend the entire time. So, with that, I will move to the first item on the agenda. We've had our discussion, we've had our workshop for citizens that are new to our process. We have our workshops on the first Tuesday of the month. This is our voting meeting. So the first item. Was that?
I was wondering if we could ask everyone but whoever is speaking to mute their mics because the sound quality is really poor.
If you're, if y'all are getting feedback, everybody go ahead and we can unmute one by one as we vote through these. If it'll clean up the audio for everybody. Okay, is that better? Can everybody hear me a little clearer now? Okay, so I'm moving through agenda item number one to, to put the project out for bid for our pocket park that, in dedication to George Chandler. So I will, entertain a motion to move that project forward into the bid phase. Gary, Gary, was that a motion from Gary? Thank you, Gary. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I heard three. I'm guessing there were four, were there four ayes? All opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Stop me if I, if I don't, if I misstate a vote, okay? Because I'm having trouble hearing everyone as they chime in with the delay. So the motion carries, it was unanimous to move that project forward into the bid phase. Thank you for that. Moving on to item number two. So, we discussed and, never officially voted to approve and I resent the project from the Rotary Club out, a simple, simple drawings of what they're proposing. I met on site with members of the club today and, we discussed materials. They're not sure, they're not set on anything yet. And we even got, you know, so I mentioned that I might put a vote to council or put, entertain a motion to approve the project. Which we can do tonight. We don't have a firm fixed spot or firm fixed materials. So I told the club, we would need to, have a second vote to approve the construction materials, what they're going to make it out of, the color it's going to be, those kind of things. And the placement of the, of the shelter itself. So I'll put it to council tonight to, to approve, we can approve the project, officially approve the project as a project in partnership with the city. Or we can table this and approve the entire thing next month when they present the materials and the, actual spot where they would like to put it. They've got a good idea and it's not, it hasn't changed. And I know Brenda worked on this with the Winterville Arts Council. And a group that we assembled for various projects in that area. Their desire is to keep it next to the depot, but I did tell them that they may, they may want to entertain other areas that citizens are requesting, rest spots along the trail where there currently are none. So I did ask them that they may want to take another pass up and down the trail to see if that's the optimum spot for, for what they envision in their project. So that's why I kind of left it open and I'll leave it open tonight to, we can approve the project or we can approve it all at one time at a, at a future meeting.
I move to table it to a future meeting.
Okay.
And we all have time to study.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Was that a second, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So I'll add during this discussion, we certainly appreciate their partnership and their willingness to do something nice here in the city and we want to, we want to help them, see that through. And, and we, we want them to see that through on behalf of the city and then, and what, what it would do for our city in that area. We just want to make sure it's in the right place and it's, and it's the right construction. So, with that, I will, with no further discussion, all in favor to table?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Great. And I'll reach out to them and explain to them, what we plan to do. And I would, they, they're wanting to do this pretty quick. So I'm guessing we'll probably have this before us in March, at the March workshop and March meeting. So we'll get it done pretty quick. Okay, the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission Complete Streets Master Planning that we discussed last week, that will include public input sessions to, to put together a master plan for pedestrian, complete streets, traffic calming, everything all throughout, throughout the city. We have a bit of information from our safe routes to school and things we've done over the last few years, but this will be a more complete plan of projects that we can prioritize with the public's help and start to chip away at using T-SLOSS dollars. The cost to the city will be a thousand dollars. The balance of these projects is, is covered under an agreement with GDOT that the Regional Commission has on behalf of cities and counties. So tonight's vote would be, to approve my signing of the MOU with the Regional Commission to move forward with this Complete Streets project, pending approval by the Program of Work Committee for the Regional Commission and Director Burke Walker. So I will entertain a motion to approve. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, item number four. Main Street Henry Meyer Intersection Project. And as you can see there, we've had the public input session there. I put it to council, the notation, a motion that we vote to approve preliminary design for the Main Street Henry Meyer Intersection Project and bundle that project with the Main Street Depot Crosswalk Project to put out for bid. As a package. So I'll entertain a motion to do that very thing. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, so to our citizens out there and to our young ones that may be listening in the community, this is, this is, this is what happens when we have our in-depth conversations at workshop and we're able to efficiently move through our agenda on behalf of the citizens. So we're, we're making great progress here tonight with some wonderful projects. So number five, new police car. I don't, I didn't, wasn't sure if you'd gotten the quote before, had Wendy send it out today either. But this is basically another Durango. Now that we have the extra full-time officers on duty, we will look to, sell one, possibly two of our fleet. So we'll be using SLOSS 2011 funds to pay for this, which is covered in the, in the SLOSS funding. And I've got those dollar figures. And if you don't have them in front of you, just for public consumption, we have sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars in the public safety bucket. This, this vehicle will total forty-five, three forty-eight, which will leave a little bit of money left over in that twenty-eleven SLOSS bucket for public safety vehicles. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion to, but I'd like to have a discussion also.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Okay, I'll open it up for discussion here.
My, I just have one question. Was consideration given to a hybrid vehicle at this point? And if we decided to reject that, I'd like to know why.
So we did discuss that and we, we always do when we get, when we, when we're about to buy a new vehicle. And still not enough confidence or enough information and with the cost of the batteries. I don't, I don't know that we're there yet. I still look at those and, and think that the city is moving towards those vehicles for sure. Probably in the pretty, very near future. And, and in thinking about it over the last couple of days and with the timeline of the new SLOSS kicking in, the, some of the conversation, Mary, that we had last week of moving money, I think a good use of the leftover money in this public safety bucket might be to overlap into the public safety bucket for next, the next SLOSS and use these remaining funds possibly for battery charge, whatever, whatever infrastructure we need to support hybrid vehicles. Right?
Okay.
So yes, and I spoke to chief about it and not comfortable going that route yet, not enough. I guess not enough. And I've got chief here with me tonight, but um, I guess not enough confidence in the information. I think we should all, you know, continue to inform ourselves on those vehicles. And unless I hear anything, you know, differently tonight from officers sitting in the room, I think we, I think we've made forward.
Department of Central Services, our fleet management has had a lot of issues with the hybrid vehicles that we bought from Athens Clark County Police Department. I just don't think the technology is there yet for us. I think we've got a few more years to develop things and get them ready for the triggers of what happens with the public safety vehicle versus the normal everyday vehicle that people drive in.
Okay.
So they've actually removed almost all of their hybrid vehicles off the road because of numerous problems they've encountered, particularly with the batteries.
Okay, could y'all hear that? I've got Officer McKinnon in here and he's talking about the trouble that ACC has had in central services and he works directly with them and they've had to pull most of their hybrid vehicles off the road because of the issues that they've had. And he, he reiterated kind of what I said, that there are a few years, the technology for public safety vehicles and the wear and tear on those vehicles is a few years away, he feels like. So I think we'll continue to, continue to seek information there.
Which city had to remove their vehicles?
Athens Clark County.
I'm wondering if anyone checked with the city we talked about when this issue first came up a couple of years ago. I think it was Clarkston maybe?
I haven't spoken with them. I haven't spoken. Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, and I'll, you and I'll get together on that because I would like to get more information on them because I have heard those. I'd like, I'd like the data, but it seems like I've heard a lot of those issues from not just Clark County, but surrounding areas. So, not quite there yet, but public safety, we got to keep our public safety safe and confident in their tools, that their daily, day-to-day tools. So any further discussion?
So thank you. I appreciate that discussion.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimous. And thank you for that discussion, Mary. Okay, moving forward, let me catch up here. With our committee members for the Firefly Trail Committee, Jennifer Crane, Diane Harris and Bruce Johnson have all applied and I put them forward to you tonight for a vote. So I'll entertain a motion to approve their service on the Firefly Trail Local Action Committee.
I move that we approve all three.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The question is, Jennifer, is Bruce's wife, as I understand?
Yes.
Is that going to create an issue?
No. No, I don't believe so.
I couldn't understand what Gary said.
Wondering if, if a married couple on the committee will create a problem, but that, that not, not on a, not on a local action committee. I'm, I'm totally fine with that. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving all three members?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimous. It's a unanimous night. So next, library board members. So a little bit of an issue here. We have had four applications and thought we could approve three, but the bylaws, we have four members serving currently. The bylaws state the board is made up of six members. So what, what I think we can do tonight is approve two members. And then I believe that the library board might be wanting to look at amending their bylaws to include more members. So that will be another discussion in the future for us to approve, but unless, and we can, we can get to, get through the motion to the, to the discussion, to discuss it further, but that being said, in, in the current situation as it stands, I would put forward Michelle Colquitt and Ellen Baker-Durwin to serve with two fantastic applications waiting to serve when we, if, when, if, or if and or when the bylaws are. So, so again, I'll put Michelle Colquitt and Ellen Baker-Durwin forward to serve on the library board.
Were all four applications forwarded? I don't remember seeing that many.
Um. I believe you would have gotten three because at the time we thought we could put three forward. I'll, I'll forward the one, if, if there was one you're missing, I'll forward those to, that one to you.
I only remember seeing Ms. Colquitt.
Oh, okay.
May I ask, and I understand that an earlier council removed the citizenship requirement that the charter calls for, but do we have any of these three members within the city limits of Winterville?
These two are.
Okay, and the other, are the other two are or not?
One is, one is not.
Thank you, sir. Could we maybe table this until we've had a chance to review all the applications?
These are recommendations made after conferring with our librarian. So I don't know. I, I, I think we'd be fine putting these forward tonight. It has, it has. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't want to table this. If we, if we can avoid table on this, I don't want to table it. Do I have a motion to approve Michelle Colquitt and Ellen Baker-Durwin to serve on the library board? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If I, if I may just suggest, Mayor, if we don't get to see the applications, I, I don't understand the validity of the council approving a recommendation. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful. But if it's important for us to approve, it seems like it would be important for us to know something about the people that are applying.
Wendy, do you, Wendy, do you have copies of the other application that the council, that you can email to council quickly?
I can't check my email in the middle of a meeting.
I'll have to look into it. Deidra, did I send them all to you, the ones I had?
Is Deidra on her audio?
No, you didn't. Um. The first two were sent directly to me and I forwarded those to you. And then Jordan Wildwood. I can't remember Jordan neither. I think he forwarded it too and I said, but those are the only three I've seen. And I'm very familiar with all three applicants and have a good relationship with all three. Like, if Wendy's going to send them, you'll see. But just FYI, Michelle Colquitt is actually a librarian in Gwinnett County. But the three that I saw were excellent. And they were the first three.
So Mr. Mayor, would you entertain a motion that we dispense with the council approval of a recommendation for this board?
No, we can, I mean, if, if we need to table this, we can table it. It's, 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 it's fine.
It's not about need. It's, it's about, I think it's about either respecting the function of the council in this matter or not. And if we don't need to approve, because I do absolutely trust our branch manager's judgment on this, maybe we, maybe the process needs to be changed.
And we can look at that at a later date, but for this, I don't think tonight is the, the night to do that. And that may, you may be absolutely right. It's probably, we should probably look into doing that, but for, for now, I thought y'all had these applications.
Yes, sir.
So we can, we can table this. This, that's fine. We can't have an all unanimous, all-night meeting. So I will take an admitted motion to table this so that we can look over all the applications and make a more comfortable decision next month. I'm totally fine with it.
I withdraw my motion and make a motion to table until next month.
Thank you, Gary. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Okay, Wendy, would you get those applications to council? All right, what's next? Business license, Big Cam Gaming. I think we have all the information we need on that. We had, we had an issue, need to get some confirmation that the land property owner was okay with it. And I believe we've seen that, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the gaming license. Business license, not gaming license, business license.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Unanimous, pretty, pretty good. Pretty good. So thank you, council, for getting through that agenda. A lot of great projects. And for the very first one, I'm, I am wearing my Civitan badge in honor of Mr. Chandler tonight, knowing we were going to take up that vote. So thank you all for, for your. So thank you all for your hard work on that, on all of that information. There's a lot of great projects in there and a lot of great future projects that can come out of the projects that we that we approved with regard to the Complete Streets Master Planning. So thank you all for that. We will move on to committee reports, Public Finance Councilperson Snow and Quinn.
I've been elected to deliver this month's report. What we have, the city clerk has prepared a financial statement for the month of January. The statement can be obtained upon request from City Hall. Keeping in mind that most of the city's revenue come in after the middle of the year, early indications show that the city's in good fiscal shape for this point in the year. Revenues are a little better than expected and expenses are within budgetary limits.
Great. Does that conclude your report?
That does.
Okay, thank you for that. Public Safety Councilpersons Mooney and Snow.
Hi. So we have a monthly report from both fire and police. And also, when I spoke with Chief Foulter last, I know there's an upcoming training that the officers are going to be doing, and that Public Safety is going to be invited to as well later on in the months.
Yes, okay. And Chief Foulter, your chief is in here with me. To Winterville's finest, you're in here with me. Do you have anything to add?
Well, we may possibly have training twice a month, some month towards you and the county where you're invited to have a training. And we're trying to keep on going, trying to move our training.
So for anybody that couldn't hear it out there, Winterville PD is trying to get to a two-training-a-month goal, and we are all invited, council. And so he'll let us know, keep us informed as to the dates of those trainings. So thank you for that. Anything, Chief Gabriel is also, I think, on the meeting. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, other than the report I sent to Amanda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. Does that conclude your report?
I believe it does, and I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Foulter for delivering our agendas and paperwork today. And thank you both for the reports.
He said you're very welcome. So thank you, chief. Okay, Community Stokes, sorry, Public Works Councilpersons Mooney and Keen.
We have not met as a committee, and it looks like Tom is not in this meeting. So unless Amanda has something, I'd say we have no report.
I do not have anything.
Yeah, was there anything to add?
Say that again, Gary?
Hey, was there anything to add?
He's coming up in a minute, so we'll ask him. He might add some things to that, so we'll get to him in a second. So does that conclude your Public Works report? Thank you. Okay, Community Center and Joanne sent out a report, a robust report to us earlier.
Yes, I did send a report. I hope everyone has received it, so I'm not going to cover. I just want to cover the rental costs. I have listed them, and I tried to keep them in line with what the city was charging for their rental fees. And so that way, there will be some continuity. And then the only other thing I wanted to add was something that didn't make it to the notes was that today we received a donation of two bulletin boards that are in pretty good shape from a doctor's office in Athens, or a dentist, I believe he is. So, and they were delivered today, and so I will need some help as far as either getting them upstairs or hanging them on the wall.
Right.
But I thought that was very generous. We can use the bulletin boards, so.
Right.
Other than that, if you have any questions, that completes my report.
Thank you. Thank you for that report, and thank you for the detailed report that you sent to us earlier. It's very helpful. And please thank the doctor's office who sent the boards for us to use.
I'm sorry.
Did you see the question that Mary emailed about the homeschool?
Yes, the Firefly Homeschool, and I did respond to her. I didn't realize it was sent to others as well.
Well, could you answer it for us?
I sure will. The Firefly Homeschool Community is a group of homeschool teachers and people, an organization that's getting together. They approached Dodd and myself, I think, I believe it was November, if I'm not mistaken. But in addition to their homeschooling, they would like to have one day a week where they get together as a group. They feel it's very pertinent to their program. And so they want to meet on Thursdays. They've already provided us with a schedule for their, not only their Thursday schedules from nine to four, but also for their breaks and a game night. They want to have one game night a month where they have a movie or games. The, one of the directors is a former Wintervillian, Tara Massey. She lives in Athens now, but she's very familiar with the area. She has two partners that are helping her to develop this program. They're ready to start taking registrations in March. And they would like to begin using the center, all three rooms, on August 12th. And some of their projects, they're very community-oriented, and a lot of their community projects will center in Winterville. In fact, they would also like to have a program with the seniors of our center. I felt Dodd and I were very impressed by them. He provided them with a rental fee, and I believe they accepted that, and they want to also use the auditorium. So the last thing I know about this whole thing is that Mr. Ellison and Dodd are working on the MOU.
Will they be paying the proposed fee that you listed in your report?
I believe this was an agreement made between Dodd and the group, so I don't know what the fee is yet. I haven't seen an MOU or the agreement yet.
I can send that fee out. I can't remember what it is now, but I can send that fee out to everyone from last year. They agreed a bond fee to use both buildings.
Any other questions? They have a really interesting program. It's a lot of, not just the educational aspect, the academics, but the side things like sewing and art classes and different, you know, all kinds of classes.
Okay, does that answer everybody's question about that? Thanks for bringing that up, Brenda, because I saw that email, and I wanted to make, I did want to get Joanne to cover that tonight. Okay, so that concludes your report. Thank you, Joanne.
Yes.
And moving on for our first report from Mateo, our City Arborist Report, Mateo Fennell. Mateo, would you introduce yourself to everybody who does not know you and give us a quick report?
Yeah, sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Mateo Fennell, and the new City Arborist, as Dodd said. Excited to meet everybody face-to-face at some point. I think I have met quite a few of you in person. This winter, we planted 42 commemorative trees, a wonderfully round number. I think we're going to stop for now, just because there's a lot of trees for us to water this summer. Currently, there is a waiting list for future commemorative trees. See, I've been doing a lot of pruning of the trees. I've prioritized dangerous trees, so anything with dead wood over parking spaces or walking trails. I've been taking out those problem branches. For example, the water oak right out in front of the train depot over the parking. Took out some very large dead branches from it. Also, I've been taking a lot of branches that are making contact with buildings, whether they're rubbing the roof of a building or the wall of a building. Some good examples of that would be the Carter Coil Museum, the maple right next to it, or the water oak that's behind the police department. It was rubbing on the roof, and I've brought it up, so it's no longer doing that. And then kind of the final thing would be some of the Firefly Trail carnage, some of the trees that have died there along North Georgia Avenue. I've removed, I removed two yesterday. I'm going to remove two more tomorrow. And that's about it. Ms. Snow, I can totally help you tomorrow with those bulletin boards. I wasn't really prepared to say anything about Public Works, other than we're painting the train depot, getting that ready to be used again. But otherwise, I'm not sure what to talk about in terms of Public Works.
So I think Tom is on the meeting. I got a message from.
You said no report.
No report, so he has no report. So I'll kind of dovetail off of what you just said and remind everybody what I said last week, which is that the depot, they have been working inside on the depot on very cold days and getting some painting done. And I think everybody, citizens and council, and everybody's going to be very impressed by the way the depot looks inside and the way the mural has been restored and set off as a really beautiful piece of art. So I look forward to the day when you can all see that and check that out. But it'll also protect that mural for many, many, many years to come, from the wear and tear that it was undergoing as a rental. So a good thing has been done there, and Public Works has done a great job of making, upgrading the depot inside, for sure. So thank you. Thank you for that report, Mateo. Appreciate it. Welcome, welcome to the council meetings.
Thank you very much.
Library report, Deidra?
Unmuted, okay. We had a really busy day today. We had the busiest day we've had in a year, I think, since the whole pandemic. It was like a regular day. We had 20 patrons inside, five or six outside, just picking up, doing all sorts of things, getting books, using the computer, using the wifi, making copies. It was a really good day. For my notes, I thought I'd share our director's, or part of our director's report with you. And any of this that you want to hear again, it's posted on the main library page. And what's in this report applies to Winterville, as well as all the other libraries in the system. And these are things you'd want to know. Dear patron, our libraries remain in phase five of our re-entry process. This is the last phase before we open the libraries back to our normal hours. While we believe we will remain in this space through the summer of '21, the library and our Board of Trustees continue to seek opportunities to help our residents. I'll share three projects. And this one is about something called tutor.com. I've posted about it a couple of times on our Facebook page. First, we recognize the difficulties that parents and caregivers are experiencing while schools have been closed and/or on some type of hybrid learning. We are pleased to inform you that for the 2021 school year, the Athens Regional Library System will offer tutor.com beginning in early February. There's a 40-second video that will introduce you to tutor.com and is valued to residents of all ages. And you can go to the main webpage or click the link on Winterville's Facebook page. But basically, tutor.com is available seven days a week from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. from home for individuals with a valid library card. It will also be available to anyone visiting the library. And it offers any kind of basic, whatever tutoring means to you, that's what they offer, from looking at term papers to helping with reading and math. I recommend that you watch the video. It's really, really good. And here's something I wanted to discuss with you. They're preparing the mobile hotspot van, which has broadband internet access available to broadcast in a wide area. We're hoping that by mid-March, we will have this van traveling the region and making regular stops at areas which do not have access or have poor access to broadband internet. Today, I got an email, they're asking all of the branches if we could talk to the community and come up with an area that you might think, that you think might be a good place for the van to park, maybe someplace with a bigger parking lot. People can already access the library's wifi sometimes from our parking lot, but always if they park right in front. So they were suggesting something like a strip mall that's gone out of business. I know some of the churches have big parking lots, but I don't know. That's not first on their list. They're looking for public areas. So just if anybody, you know, take some time to think about it, and just feel free to call me or email with any suggestions of where a good place would be for the van to park, and then people could come and use the wifi.
The center's parking lot is empty right now, so.
Okay. I'll mention that.
I was just going to say, I think we should pull Shawonda into this conversation to see what she thinks, but also, what about Pittard Park?
I mentioned that to them today. I mentioned Pittard Park and then said I would ask for further ideas. Yeah, the park's a great idea, Amanda.
So Deidra, is that, does that conclude your report?
And I have one more.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that by April, several of the libraries will be offering mobile printing to residents. And what that means is the patrons will be able to send print jobs from their cellphone or their tablet to the Athens Clark County, Danielsville, Royston, Bogart, and Watkinsville Library, and pick up your print jobs there. Instead, in other words, instead of having to go in, stick in your flash drive, or log in and bring up your document, you can just send the job.
Was the Winterville branch included in that?
No, because we have such limited hours. But, I mean, we still offer printing for people to come in. And people have been emailing us documents to print here or there. That's something we started offering about a year ago.
Okay.
I think that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Deidra, and that's a lot of great information. So when you mentioned that van, did you say there was one van? Just one van?
I have one van.
Okay.
The hotspot van.
Okay. As part of my report, I'll include something, so stick on the meeting, if you would, because I may include you in something in just a few minutes. Thank you for the report. Clerk's report, Wendy?
I do not have anything to add.
Okay. City Attorney's report, David?
I have nothing to add either.
Okay. No news is good news there. So, in my report, the one topic that I'll move up to the front of the report is a task force that I've gotten assembled with our two principals, and I mean, Dr. Ford at Coil and Dr. Elder at Winterville Elementary, and we've had a couple of meetings and decided. Dr. Elder at Winterville Elementary, and we, we've had a couple of meetings and, and decided that we need to be planning, not only for now, but be planning for fall of make sure, making sure that we get our kids here in these two schools back in the schools. And I know there's a plan to get them, uh, back in in March by the district. But, but with the uncertainty that we've, we've encountered over the last year, I wanna plan for locally. And so I've created, we've created a task force, and, and they're assembling a group on their, and each one of their schools. Um, but we're gonna be discussing all, a, a, anything and everything regarding school. We've also talked about, um, a summer learning program where the city might become involved and offer parks possibly, or parks to, not, not to bridge the gap between this year and next year, to, but to really lift, lift the boats that have been, you know, just treading water for the last year, if you will, or, or not, or not, not sailing as smoothly as they usually do if they're in in-person schools. So we wanna, we wanna make sure that our community children are, are brought back up to speed and back up to where they should be at grade level, um, which, which they're, which they're just not, and it's nobody's fault. It's, it's just what we're dealing with through this pandemic. So that task force, and Deidra, I mentioned your name because some of the issues you brought up, tutor.com and this broadband van, those can be incredibly helpful to us. So I would like to, um, have a discussion with you offline, or possibly even the Board, or Board members, to become involved with it on this task force with me, the principals, um, and stakeholders at the schools. So I'll, I'll have that, I'll send you that email, and anybody else that would like to be a part of this with me, um, and, and offer your ideas on how we do this, I'm all ears, because it's important and it's critical. Um, because, you know, we, we've had some major, major issues, obviously, in getting our kids and all of our community children in the, in a surrounding area of Winterville, Winterville and the surrounding area. And we need to do our, let our best to make sure as a community, we're bringing them back up to full speed and beyond um, for their, for their own sakes and for the sake of the future of our community. So I ask for your help in that. Be on the lookout for task force information. Deidra, thank you for your information. I think you'd be a very helpful member of the team with all that the library can offer and the partnership that we can provide as a city to the schools. Um, and next, I'll mention that we actually were surprised today to receive, um, a sign that is now out in the W by the marquee. Coil nominated Winterville as Stakeholder of the Month, the City of Winterville, for the community support that we provide to the Coil Linux School community. So when you ride by the marquee, make sure you check out that sign and be very proud of everything the city does for, for the young ones in this community. Um, you, you all have a part in that, and you all deserve it. So thank you for the work that you do in helping there. Um, I would just like to, first of all, before I move forward, is to let citizens know that David is here. For any public comments that you have watching Facebook Live, enter them now. If there's anything I need to address, or you would like counsel or myself to address, as far as comments or public comments, go ahead and enter them now, and we'll take a look at those in just a second. Uh, HPC, Historic Preservation Commission hearings, the public hearings are set for next week. Um, there's three different opportunities for you to provide your input with regard to historic, historic boundaries and historic design guidelines in these boundaries, in the overlay districts. So make sure you check out the website and look for, and it's on the calendar on the website. So make sure you look up citywinterville.com, go there, check out the dates and times and attend one of those if you, if that is of interest to you. Um, road repaired, you'll, citizens traveling Main Street will experience, um, some construction as we have the crew back out from the Firefly Trail with some sagging in the road repair that was done in front of the Baptist Church to address some stormwater issues. You're gonna see some, uh, repair done there over a couple of days, so be patient as we, as we get that done. Um, I have put in our official request for the Planning and Zoning Retreat, and, um, I look forward to hearing back from the Regional Commission soon on dates for that, the City Council and Planning and Zoning Retreat to address our code and square footage requirements within the city, as well as additions to our code that we may need to address. Uh, Arbor Day is February twentieth. I don't know that there's a time set for that yet. Mateo, is there a time set for the Arbor Day? Are you still on?
I am. Um, give me a second. I can pull it up, uh, in my email.
Okay. And I believe while, while Mateo is looking that up, that, that is all that I have to cover. We have, we have a whole lot going on. Um, and a lot of it that you heard tonight in the way of projects and, and.
At two PM.
Two PM, February twentieth, Saturday is.
And we're meeting down at the basketball courts.
Yep, down in the natural area of Pittard Park.
Correct.
Um, we'll be planting a tree with the Tree Commission, socially distanced, wearing masks, all that good stuff, so, um, we look forward to that day. I believe, unless council has anything, any other announcements that I've missed, um, you can always check the website, and we'll, we'll try to keep social media as informed as we can. Uh, we continue to look for ways to improve our communication there. I think I, I think I did do this in the workshop last week, but, um, I'll do it again for those watching. This is the Gazette. This is the Winterville Gazette from, um, twenty sixteen, May, June twenty sixteen. This is, that's it. As if for three, two and a half, three pages. Um, and now this is the Winterville Gazette today. So it's, um, I think twenty-two, around twenty-two pages. Good information. It could be a lot bigger than that. We're working as hard as we can and as diligently as we can to provide as much information as we can to keep you up to date, keep you informed, uh, constantly looking for innovative ways to do that. We do have a partnership with Regional Commission now. We've got a great project going on. We started, um, last week, really fine tuning it, um, with our feet on the ground and, and really getting the story mapping um, in high gear. So we look forward to joining that with our website to create more real-time information for citizens with regard to projects and anything we have going on, so that you'll know what's going on when you pass projects that are occurring in your neighborhoods or on your main streets. Um, so with that, that will conclude my report. And Shawanda is on our neighborhood leader. Shawanda, are you on?
I wonder, are you on?
I did not. Yeah, so Shawanda is not on. Um, so we'll look for a report, and I know she's doing great things, so that would be a part of her report. Um, so we'll look forward to hearing her report at the next meeting. Uh, with that, I'll, public comments, David, anything? Everybody's happy? Wonderful.
I have one more thing.
Great. Right here.
I just wanted to, for whoever is listening, um, to encourage anyone who is sixty-five and older to get your appointment for the vaccine. We're in phase one A still. Um, so if you fall in phase one A, you can call, or you can get online and get your appointment for your vaccine.
Thank you for that information. Um, I think, I think that is it, if there are no other public comments, David. So with that, um, I will entertain a motion that we have last on the agenda as for council to go into executive session. This is gonna be a little bit tricky. So, um, everyone except council, David and myself and Wendy needs to drop off of the Zoom call, and I need to go over to Facebook Live for a second and end that. And I'll come back to see everybody in the Zoom meeting.
I was wondering how this is gonna work.
We'll do all that for me. Um, and I'll be, I'll just be sitting here while they do all that. See, see everyone in a minute. Thank you. So with that, could I have a motion to, um, that we go into executive session? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that everybody? I heard two.
Oh.
And I'll oppose. Okay. Um, motion carries, so we will go into executive session.
Hey, David, there's a, uh, video going viral of a lawyer who was meeting with a judge over Zoom, and he didn't, he, his filter was on of him as a kitten, and he didn't know how to turn it off.
Yeah, I hope I never go viral.